Okay, at seven o'clock, I'm gonna call the Village Newglers Board meeting to order. Kelsey, would you please do the roll call?
Yes. Michael Bell, Henry Janisch, Peggy Cruz,
Present.
Tammy Newberry.
Yeah.
Chuck Phillipson.
Here.
Roger Trutman.
Here.
Michael Bell, Henry Janisch. Okay.
Okay, thank you, Kelsey. Uh, item two announcement, the board will convene in the closed session under state statute nineteen eighty-five one E for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public property, the investing of public funds or conducting other specific public businesses whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session regarding police chief employment agreement. Uh, item three, I look for an approval of the agenda.
This is Tammy, I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second, Chuck.
Okay, we have motion second, are there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item four, public comparisons and citizens comments. Citizen comments on items not listed on this agenda, no debate will occur. Items will not be acted upon at this meeting but will be referred to the proper staff or committee of action is required. And please keep your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak at this time? Okay, hearing none. Uh, item five, I look for approval of the consent agenda.
So move Chuck.
Second, Tammy.
Okay. We have a motion to second. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Old, old business, item eight, public information presentation for the Newglers water system.
Uh, Brian, uh, let me, I'll get the, my screen share up and then you can take it from there.
Sounds great. Uh, while Drake's orchestrating the AV, uh, for the folks that I have not had an opportunity to meet yet, my name is Brian Berquist, I'm president at Town and Country Engineering. We help the water utility out, uh, with its engineering needs. And we have, uh, over the past several months, chatted with, uh, the board at their meetings about the status of the water system and looking ahead, uh, some recommendations on ways to better serve the system now and how to size that for anticipated future demand. So, uh, what we've got for you tonight is a set of slides that, for the folks that have heard this already, uh, hopefully it's repetitive. Uh, uh, for the folks that haven't, uh, we'll go through the existing system, some of the features and limitations of that. And, uh, where we are right now and where we're headed in the near and long-term future.
Do you see the slides, Brian?
I had them and now they're, it's just your blank desktop.
Oh.
There we are. So, uh, just to get everybody's bearings here, the, I'm gonna get out my marker. This is a map of the village system, the village water system. I think you, can you guys see my mouse?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so you've got three wells, well one is at Village Hall. Well two, a little further south, and well three up by the shop. Uh, they are varying sizes, but all work together to provide your water production. Uh, you've got very good water quality in town, no real concerns there. Uh, two of the wells do have generators. The well at Village Hall does not. Where we are, when we get into talking about your water production needs, I'll, I'll be using the term firm well capacity. Uh, because the wells necessarily need to be taken down every ten to fifteen years for maintenance. And because that maintenance generally lasts for two months or so. When we're sizing things for municipal need of community, we always assume your largest well happens to be out of service. Either for planned maintenance or something broke, uh, and when we're sizing the appropriateness of, of big things like wells or reservoirs, we always assume your largest one is out of service. So that term is called firm well capacity. Uh, you also have a storage tank up at the top of the hill on the west, uh, rim of the valley. That is your only storage tank where wells fill that and then turn off and water is, is released as folks need it throughout the day until it gets to a certain level and then fills back up. Uh, that's how almost all of the village works, there is a boosted zone uh, surrounding the tower. Those homes there are fed water via a booster station, which is an underground uh, set of pumps that due to the elevation of those homes relative to the tank, they're about the same elevation. They need pumping to get their pressure to sufficient levels. Uh, so you do have a boosted zone right around, right around the tank. That feature, uh, or function of geography or geology is, is where a lot of your system constraints exist just due to nature. Uh, you can only serve folks at about elevation nine hundred sixty or below using gravity, which is great because you don't have to use electricity for it and it works all the time. Uh, any additional development above nine sixty would either require upsizing your booster station on the west side or creating a booster station on the east side. Uh, those developments that have been proposed over the last twenty years are generally in those undeveloped areas which comprise elevations over nine sixty. And because of some of the higher, higher upfront costs to construct those booster stations, those developments, uh, have not occurred as, as of yet. Another limitation of the existing system is related to your storage. Uh, the tank itself is a two hundred eighty-two thousand gallon tank, or maybe we can go to the next, here we go. Uh, let me back up to the water. So you, your three wells, uh, can produce about nine hundred thousand gallons a day. That firm well capacity is five hundred and seventy-two thousand gallons a day with your largest well out of service. Uh, for that, we're assuming eighteen hour runtimes. Uh, anything more than that really works the pumps a little too hard and can lead to shortened life and more failures, unplanned failures or higher maintenance costs. So we'd really don't like to see those pump any more than eighteen hours a day. To put that in perspective, uh, your average use in the village is about three hundred sixteen thousand gallons a day. You can see that's quite a bit less than your maximum day.
I'm sorry, Scott.
Any question? Okay, uh, the maximum day over the past few years has been five hundred fifty thousand gallons a day. Uh, that's often seasonal, that occurs most often in the summer or during a fire event. But that's fairly typical to see about one and a half times your average day to your maximum day. And of course, those are the type of days that we're trying to plan for when designing a municipal system or, or considering recommending and upsizing of existing things or creating of new things. You have a decent amount, a plenty of, of water production and we're not seeing any reason to be concerned about the number or capacity of your wells. I had gotten a little ahead of myself before talking about pressure. Uh, to fall back on that, you do have one booster station that serves an area right around that nine hundred sixty foot contour. That neighborhood, uh, has capacity for probably about five more homes on it, ten more homes depending on the size and how many stories.
I know, I hear you.
Uh, the reason that we always say nine sixty is your limit is we do have a range of pressure that we try to provide at each home of between forty to ninety PSI. Uh, because pressure is a function of elevation, uh, homes down by, uh, the bottom of the valley have much higher pressure, about ninety is what we're seeing. DNR does allow for up to a hundred, uh, we try to stay away from that maximum amount due to the stress it puts on plumbing. On the higher elevation side, which would be lower pressure, uh, DNR requires thirty PSI. Uh, we again try to stay away from the lowness of that because your tower does fluctuate as it empties and fills. So we try to shoot for an average of forty and that's sufficient to provide a two-story home with a decent shower while somebody's doing laundry, just to put that in perspective. And then, uh, next slide. And storage is what we're talking mostly about tonight. You do have the one tank, uh, it, it can hold two hundred eighty-two thousand gallons. But of that, about two hundred twenty-one thousand is available for fires and available for system use. Uh, the reason for that is it is ground mounted. Uh, and if the tank got more, excuse me, if the level of water in the tank got to be less than about ten feet above the floor, it would be too low to provide pressure for those unboosted homes that are about elevation nine fifty-five, nine fifty-eight. So we use that two hundred twenty-one thousand gallons as your available storage. When trying to answer the question of whether or not a community needs additional storage, there are a number of methods that can be used to answer that question. Uh, all of them valid for their own reasons, uh, they're all different scenarios that the engineering community has created to try and come up with some semi-standard ways of looking at it. Uh, this chart on the slide compares existing demands and future demands, a twenty-year look ahead for both a study that was done in, uh, the early two thousands as well as the study that we are, uh, about ready to wrap up in twenty twenty-two. With each one of the methods described in the rows across and numbers in red indicating that the demand for that particular scenario exceeds your available storage. So you can see in the early two thousand study, uh, there were two scenarios where your existing storage was sufficient for the existing use at that time, however, a combination of, uh, some residential growth, some fairly healthy industrial growth has resulted in the current conditions exceeding all seven methods of analysis uh, both now and in the future. Uh, the first method, the, the easiest one to look at is what is your average day demand? DNR likes to see an ability for a system to serve itself for one solid average day without any wells in service. And this would be a scenario where there's been a power outage and your generators have failed. The next series of analyses are all related to fire events. And a fire event really stresses the system because of the amount of water needed in a short time. And each one of those methods looks at different types of fire scenarios that could occur, whether it occurs on a max day or an average day, whether it occurs with all of your wells in service or your largest well out of service. Uh, but for, uh, previous discussions and for tonight's discussion, uh, what, what really, uh, brought things to light in the twenty twenty-two study is that with your current water usage, uh, you're, you're edging past available storage as it sits and then looking ahead for any particular growth of any kind. Uh, we are seeing that deficit continuing to grow. So based on those calculations that we've done, we are, do recommend that the villages explore and pursue additional water storage. Uh, to that end, the village board directed us to get started on a preliminary design effort that, uh, we have begun. Uh, we have not identified an exact location, there are some spots on the east top of the valley that lend themselves well to the right elevation. But the location involve, will affect cost because land likely need to be purchased and we would need to connect the new storage tank to the existing system. So in order to address costs, uh, communities and water utilities have a couple of tools at their disposal. Uh, certainly wanting to explore all options, uh, the village had in the past and, and is currently pursuing an update of the use of impact fees. Uh, water impact fees, impact fees can be used for a number of things, uh, parks, libraries and water is one of them. Uh, it's a tool that allows a community or utility to pay for something that is a good idea to build, but that is going to serve or at least partially serve customers that don't exist yet. So, uh, because obviously with the new, to expand your water storage, you can't expand it ten thousand gallons at a time. Uh, you need to do a discrete tank, you need a second tank. Um, the tank you design and build in twenty twenty-two uh, should accommodate twenty, thirty and forty years of growth to make sure it's, you don't have to build another one. Uh, but by that definition, there's capacity of that tank and cost that does not necessarily help existing customers. Existing customers do benefit from a second tank, better fire protection, more redundancy, but not necessarily all of the gallons that would be in that tank on day one. So a impact fee allows a community to calculate and assign benefit of a new, in this case, tank and distribute the cost between existing ratepayers and hopeful potential future ratepayers. Uh, that's done in conjunction with your financial consultant. And also needs to be submitted and approved by the Public Service Commission. Uh, PSC's role in charge is to ensure that a community doesn't build in a million gallon storage tank, that's not necessary. And further, once they've approved the size of the tank, that they feel is prudent based on reasonable projections in the future, they want to make sure that current ratepayers are not unnecessarily burdened by that cost to build in that extra capacity. So a community and this board, uh, once the financial consultants have had a kick at it, will need to make some judgments based on how much value should be assigned to existing and new ratepayers. Uh, they'll be walking you through some pros and cons of that, uh. The, the long and short of it is the more that is placed on future users, the less you'd have to increase your rates now. The downside is that the more you lean on future users, the more you need them to show up. And if they don't, it could stress the community financially if those, that development doesn't occur. So in broad strokes, um, we're still, um, very roughly estimating about two million dollars. Uh, we're anticipating a tank roughly the size of your existing one. Uh, but again, depending on that size, uh, and that location of the tank, that number may fluctuate. And also obviously the market for steel. We are lined up to pursue the safe, state's safe drinking water fund for at least a low interest loan. Um, and may also be eligible or likely will be eligible for a federal rural development water loan. Those loans are generally at or below two percent, kind of depends on, it does depend on when you would close on that. Uh, the village also does have access to the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act funds. Those have been discussed as a potential revenue source. Uh, the federal BIL bipartisan infrastructure law is also a source of funding that at the moment we've been advised that the state will be pushing that through existing programs, which is the Safe Drinking Water Fund loan. Uh, so, uh, again, the, the village is in line to apply for those funds in calendar twenty twenty-three. And the balance of that would be made up by this balance of impact fee and current user rates. Uh, so certainly to, to be clear, under any scenario, uh, there almost, well, there would be an impact to rates, but without identifying and having more information as to how big the tank is, where it would be, how much would be funded by grants and loans. And then how much, you know, where you want to slide that needle of impact fee to user rates, would your financial consultants really be able to answer any questions about how much of a rate impact it would be? Like, uh, next slide. So, uh, before I turn it over for questions, uh, just to give you a status of where we're at, as I mentioned, we are just polishing up our water system facilities needs assessment, uh, which will then go to the financial consultants and they will work up an impact fee report. And they and us will present to this group uh, recommendations for creating an impact fee, which then will go to the state for review and approval. Uh, parallel to that, we have, as we're wrapping up the report of the needs assessment, we had begun the preliminary designing for the tank and started to explore potential locations and had some very preliminary discussions with some property owners at that elevation. So with that, uh, we'd be happy to take any questions or simply stand by.
Do any of the board members have any questions for Brian? God, it would, uh, conclude the public information presentation portion. If the board would like, we could move on to the, um, item B, uh, old, item six B listed under the, on the agenda.
I would just like to say thank you, Brian, for, uh, coming in and talking us through this, uh, over the last couple of months. It's been, uh, very
A pleasure.
Very good to get this information and to, uh, try to help our constituents understand what exactly we're going through and what we're trying to, the decisions we're trying to make, village too. So I appreciate all the time that you've given us on this.
You're very welcome, Nick, and I appreciate the opportunity to work with you.
Okay, with that being said, thank you, Tammy, by the way. Uh, item B, consideration discussed in resolution twenty-two dash zero six approving the agreement between the Village of Newglers and the Newglers Area School District regarding payment of water utility impact fees.
This is Tammy.
I'm sorry, Tammy, go ahead.
I just wanted to go ahead and make a motion that we approve this agreement.
Uh, for the sake of discussion, I'll second that, Chuck.
Okay, uh, we have a motion in second, is there any further discussion on this item?
Sorry, uh, this is Henry, um, does this tie us into absolutely, uh, building the school before the water is, uh, in place?
Hmm, no, uh, in short, no. Um, I should note that I talked to, uh, Superintendent Jennifer Sayer and they have, uh, pushed back their targeted, uh, opening date of the school, uh, to twenty twenty-four, uh, which should line up, uh, better with the, um, water tower that would come online if everything went to schedule. Um, but, uh, which we anticipate being operational sometime in, in twenty twenty-four. Um, so it either greatly reduced the gap between a school being built and a water tower being operational, or if everything lined up well, there would be, there wouldn't be a gap. Um, but in general, th- this agreement, all this agreement does is it's the school district essentially telling, agreeing uh, to pay what the future impact fee that is, that is designed out of the needs assessment being conducted by, um, Town and Country and the, um, impact fee study that would be conducted, uh, by a financial firm. Further down the agenda, there is a, a contract with Ellers, um, to, uh, uh, approve their, their, for their, a contract for their services for exactly that. Um, so those are two sides of the same coin. Um, so this agreement deals only with the school district's payment of the impact fee, essentially that they're saying there's a possibility that they will pull a build permit before this impact fee. In the, in the scenario where they pulled a build permit before this impact fee was in place, they're agreeing to pay what the future impact fee is, is going to say is their, uh, fair share, um, based on the impact fee that is implemented by the ordinance. Uh, this, the, the school district site plan still has to be approved, uh, by the plan commission. And if there's any exceptions or variances or other, um, agreements that the board has to enter into them for, uh, development of infrastructure or, or anything like that, separate agreements that, that will, those still have to occur. Uh, there will likely be a development agreement that encompasses several different aspects of the school district, uh, project uh, as far as what, uh, village expectations are, uh, and, and, and what is, what is required of the development, you know, conditional upon that approval. Um, so those all still have to occur regardless of whether this, uh, agreement is approved or not. Uh, if the agreement wasn't approved, um, it conversely, it would not stop the project from moving forward either. The school district would still be able to continue with their submittals. Uh, it would just be an absence of their agreement to pay the future impact fee. Um, so concerns about the, the site plan or about the, about it, an opening of, of the date or, or a gap, a, a gap, um, would all be addressed at a, at a different approval time uh, if there were concerns, um, regarding those, but, uh, this agreement is separate, uh, from those site plan concerns.
Thanks, Drake, that were very thorough.
Okay, we have, still have a motion in the second, anyone else care to speak? Okay, hearing none. Kelsey, I would like to roll call vote on this, please.
Okay. Henry Janisch.
Yes.
Peggy Cruz.
Yeah.
Tammy Newberry.
Yes.
Chuck Phillipson.
Yes.
Roger Trutman.
Yes.
And I don't believe Michael Bell is present, but Michael Bell? Okay.
That was five yeses, right?
Yes.
Kelsey, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Um. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to new business. Item eight, Ninth Avenue Reconstruction Bond Pre-Sale Report by Ellers.
Dave, are you still with us?
I sure am.
Alex, I'll hand it over to you.
Brian, you did a great job. That was some good information. I'll make sure John, I'll make sure John Cameron from our office, uh, if the board considers our contract, uh, gets in contact with you if that happens.
You bet. Uh, for the rest of the group, is there any other need for Nick or myself to stick around? We may check out if not.
You mean, you're not gonna listen to me?
I'll still keep it on. I'll keep it on my uh, speakerphone.
Yeah, thank you, Brian. You did a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks a lot, Brian.
Have a good evening.
Drake, do you have any introduct- any introductory comments, or do you want me to just head right in?
Um, I guess just briefly, um, the resolutions and presentation before you is uh, for the financing of the Ninth Avenue Reconstruction Project. Which is a complete reconstruction of Ninth Avenue and Underground Utilities with the exception of uh, water infrastructure, which was replaced. Um, more recently, uh, and still has many, many decades of useful life. Um, but it is a uh, replacement of damaged sidewalk, installation of new sidewalk, installation of. Storm sewer, installation of wastewater. And uh, replacement or installation of curb and gutter. Um, so this is a, this is the funding mechanism we are uh, pursuing to pay for that and about, just about one point six uh, million dollars. So Dave will take us through uh, the details.
Uh, do you want me to share my screen, or do you want to share a screen? I'll just tell you in advance. How do you want to do it?
I think you should be able to share your screen.
Okay. Now, if I can just find the report. Okay. Uh, shall I leave it that big, or can you read it like this? Are you good with that?
I'm good.
Okay. So this is the pre-sale report. You, you've heard my spiel a couple of times in the past, but uh, a pre-sale report really is. A document that we use to, to um, document the planning that went into. Uh, heading into the market where we sell your, your bonds. And so. Uh, some of the information here is kind of the result of all that planning. Uh, as Drake said, the, the issue is a going to the market with a one million, six hundred and five thousand general obligation corporate purpose bond. Uh, the reason that you're using that is to fund your, your twenty-two Ninth Avenue uh, street project, which involves sewer, storm, streets and water, just a little bit of water. Uh, you know, one important item on here that we talk about a lot when, when I'm presenting to you is, is the general obligation uh. Capacity. And after we issue these bonds, we'll be at about almost seven million dollars, which is sixty-one percent of your limit. The bonds will have a call feature on them, so um, in May of twenty thirty-one, if we have good interest rates. Um, or if you have some cash on hand, uh, we can refund what's left to be paid over the next. It'll be the issues thirty-two or the maturities thirty-two through thirty-seven. Uh, that we could either reduce how much we, we refund that by, or if the interest rates are, aren't any good. Um, at that point that it's refundable, we'll just keep going with it as is. But you have the opportunity to, to refund it if it makes sense at that point.
Can I just, can I just get verification of that? That means there's no penalty for paying it early.
Uh, you, you can't pay early until May of thirty-one, but at that point you can apply funds to it, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Um, as far as the rating, I, I went through this a little bit with Drake. Basically, I put together sort of a Moody's uh, rating schedule and it really kind of. Uh, showed that you're still right around what would be an A-two rating, which is just the same basically as not being rated. The other thing that I showed Drake is that, that even if we were to go out and, and uh. Uh, get a rating and maybe get to a double A rating. Um, if, if that were possible, that the savings on this issue don't make up for how much the rating is. So my recommendation is not to rate it because why would we want to spend fourteen thousand dollars to save nine thousand dollars of interest? So um, the reason we're not rating this issue is because it just doesn't make financial sense to do it. It costs you more to do it than the, to, to have a rating. Uh, as far as the method of sale, just like we've done in the past, uh, we're going to solicit for. Uh, local, regional and national underwriters to bid on your bonds. And hopefully we'll have a good showing so that we end up with a nice, a nice low interest rate in this market. Uh, the one thing that we're, we're presenting to you tonight that's a little different than normal is what's called the parameters resolution. The parameters resolution is something that you'll consider that's in your packet, that basically instead of. Uh, selling your bonds on a village board day and coming to the village board meeting and presenting it and having you approve. The sale that night, this is a delegation of that approval. To either the village administrator or the village clerk treasurer to accept the, the low bid uh, on the day of sale. It helps us uh, get to the market a little sooner. Um, it also gives us a little bit of flexibility as far as, you know, if rates really take off and we have some. Some bad things happen, which actually there are some bad things happening. Uh, COVID was a reason why people pulled sales a few years ago. Um, this gives us a little bit of flexibility. Also, we typically try to sell on a non. Monday, Tuesday, because those are really busy days, because as you can imagine, that's the days where most of. You municipalities have your board meetings, so there's a lot of sales on those days. So. What can do is, is because we're not on a busy day, is it could potentially pull some bidders in that wouldn't have normally bid on your bonds. So these parameters, and, and just so you know, I did put an information sheet uh, in your packet, so page ten of this document, which I won't go through in more detail when we get to that. Has kind of a, you know, what are, what does this mean and, and uh, why do we do it? Um, but for the most part in this case, I, I think the, the thought process is that because interest rates are heading north, the sooner we can get to the market. The, maybe the, the less the interest rate will be when we get there. So there's a couple of things that we set up in front. Uh, that the underwriters have to meet when they, when they prepare their bid. We're obviously not going to sell the issue for more than we need, which is that million six. We want a maximum bid of only a hundred and five, and the reason that number is important is because there's still premium. Being used to kind of prop up some of the coupons. And so if we get too much premium. We can't, and we can't spend it on the interest on the first three years, we end up with a problem. So we actually run a calculation to make sure we won't have too much. Uh, premium and get in trouble with our bond council uh, on sale day. So that's maximum is, is that. The minimum is really the underwriter's discount. There's a certain amount that you'll see in the sizing sheet that is how much the. Uh, underwriters use to basically uh, make money on, on a deal, and that's the maximum amount that they typically take. So that difference between basically a hun- a million six oh five and, and ninety-eight point seven five percent of that is typically the. The discount that the underwriter would keep for compensation. So we don't want any less than that. Uh, the maximum interest rate uh, that, that we have in here is three point five zero. That's something that has been a little bit of an issue with a taxable issue I had. Uh, recently that, that uh, interest rates have gone up enough that that number is, is, was in danger on that issue. We think that this one will be uh, fine when we get to sale day unless something crazy happens. And then we may need to bump that up a little bit, but we'll try to get back to you before, before sale day to get that fixed if we have to, if the rates keep going. Um, and then the other thing is because of the premium, they may uh, throw out the issue. Sometimes because that goes to pay the interest in that year, it'll mess up what we're showing as far as the tax rate impact. And we're trying to keep your tax rate stable and flat so that. You don't have a lot of people wondering why your, your debt service tax rate is bouncing up and down and causing your taxable to change. So it's something that we're, gives us a little bit of flexibility to make sure that the structure of your debt still keeps your tax rate flex- or stable. Uh, let's see. Uh, we did talk to staff a little bit about investing in bond proceeds, and I think uh, Kelsey was looking into maybe a pay. Uh, spend down schedule, so we could at least give you kind of an idea of what kind of interest you might be able to make, or if the local bank can. Can give you something that's uh, similar in interest. Uh, risk factors, the only thing that really we need to tell you about is that if for some odd reason, your utilities don't have money. Um, because the bonds are backed by the property tax that you'd have to levy a tax. Now, I think that. Your, your rates are in place and you've raised rates where you can do it without the PSC. Uh, so that you're able to pay your bills. So, you know, that would be the only reason is if some reason there wasn't a way to collect that money to, to make your debt payments. But we need to make you aware that the property tax backs this up, and so it would have to kick in at that time if there was a problem. Uh, other service providers is Quarles and Brady, it's your bond counsel. Um, bond trust services is your paying agent, which aids you in making sure that you make your debt payments on time and you do. Some uh, required actions when, when there's uh, certain things called term bonds. And then, like I said, we are, we're recommending that you don't get raided on this issue. And then as far as the schedule of events, we're presenting to you the pre-sale today. Uh, we'll do a due diligence call with uh, Quarles and Brady leaving the, leading the disclosure council. Uh, in reviewing the official statement before it goes out to the underwriters, so they can take a peek at what you're all about. Um, those will go out to the underwriters on April twenty-sixth. And then on May fifth, if you approve the parameters resolution in your packet today. Then either Drake or, or Kelsey would sign off on the award. Uh, Drake is listed as a primary and the only reason that, that Kelsey would jump in is if something. Kept Drake from being able to do it that day, so that he, so Kelsey is basically a backup. And then as far as the money coming into your bank account to start paying for your projects, that would be May twenty-fifth, the closing date. And then just to kind of go through, uh, just real quick with the schedules. Um, you know, the, here's the project costs that you have, that, that Drake provided us. Uh, your issuance costs are, are basically, I think they're pretty well locked down. I think I had um, uh. Quarles and Brady gave me both the bond council and disclosure council, though these three numbers are basically somewhat related to the size of the issue. Uh, paying agent fee will be a little bit less than that because of uh, the appropriation of how much of the year that we're in at the point that we actually sell. And then the underwriter fee is one, one of the items that an underwriter will potentially reduce to get the bid. So it's possible that that twenty thousand will come down and, and any amount that we can reduce the size of the bond will be applied against that. There's a little bit of interest, then there's rounding to get to the uneven five thousand mark, which is what you issue bonds and notes, open market notes in. And so that's the size of that. Does anybody have questions on the sizing? This is the schedule that we basically saw for the tax rate. And so you'll see that we're around two, two dollars and eighty-five-ish uh, back in twenty twenty-one. Um, we actually uh, sized it to a little bit closer to this, but the interest rates kind of popped on us, so we did a re. Uh, redo of the interest rates, so it put us a little bit over, but we're kind of thinking that. That the uh, premium will allow us to, to bring that back in line with that, that twenty twenty-one number. Um, and then you see that the, the rate drops, which gives you flexibility in the future to do some projects. And the way this is set up, this is kind of your existing debt payments here. So this is real. You know, what your equalized tax rate is on the debt that you already have. The pink is your new. Uh, new issue to fund the project, and then these red items are. Other funding sources that pay for it. Like I said, the stormwater has a portion, the like, the sewer. Electric water, and then there's some special assessments that you're levying on this as well, that will help make payments on this new issue. Then this is just a breakdown by each of the uh. The entities that are paying for the bonds, so you can see their repayment schedules. And then this is the debt limit calculation. Uh, you know, this is the end of the year, whereas I told you we're at sixty-one percent after the end of the, the sale. Uh, by the end of twenty-two, you'll be back down to about fifty-eight point five percent for twenty twenty-two. Uh, that was the information sheet and the parameters. I'm happy to answer questions on that. And then we just had the. The interest rate chart and, and based on some of the things that we heard about uh, Monday. And probably today, this line is probably going up a little bit more, so it's. It's unfortunate, but since the beginning of the year and with all the things that have been happening in the, in the world. Uh, interest rates have been going up about ten points per week, so it hasn't been um, a really great. Uh, thing to be able to talk to clients about when you're not really sure where that line's going to stop before your sale hits, so. Um, you know, we're hoping that what we have sized in here with interest rate risk has got enough on that interest rate to. To uh, meet what we've showed you, but if things keep going crazy, it's possible that the rates could be. A little higher and I'd have to come back and tell you uh, that we didn't do as good as our planning run, so hopefully that doesn't happen, but uh, unknown world these days. Um, that's all I have out of this document, but I'm happy to answer anything in that uh, that you might have seen or heard when I was going through.
This is Tammy. I just wanted to go back to the um, the risk factor, um, where. So there, part of this program is, or part of this process is we're redoing all of the underwork, which is the uh. The water, the sewer and everything. And so it sounds like we're going to use some of our utility money to pay for that. Um, so what, I don't really understand what the concern is. Is that the utility wouldn't be able to hold up their, their amount and then that.
Yeah, and, and you know, this is kind of a theoretical thing that, you know, if something bad happened and you weren't able to collect the revenues from the users. Uh, which I, I'm not really sure why that would be, um, that you would have to levy taxes to make the payment. So really, it's something we need to tell you about. But based on, you know, the health of your utilities, which your staff would be able to tell you even more about. Um, there really isn't a reason why you should expect that to happen.
Okay, so basically the property taxpayers are uh, co-signing this. But we're really confident that we are, okay.
General obligation, general obligation is ultimately secured by the property tax levy. So if something were to go wrong, the property taxes have to pay for it.
Got it. Okay. Um, and then you said that we were only going to be at sixty-one percent of our borrowing. Um. I was trying to figure out it looked like for a year, and then, and then it's going to drop back down to fifty-one percent. I'm sorry, I was trying to figure that out.
Okay, so, so this sixty-one percent on this page is as of May twenty-fifth, I think it was. So this closing date is when you'll be at that sixty-one percent. But the graph, the graph I have in the back here is as of twelve thirty-one twenty-two. So you'll still, you still have some debt payments to make during twenty twenty-two, that'll get you back down to this number. And if you didn't borrow anything for the next five years, you'd be down to twenty-six percent. Uh, typically you do a street project every couple of years, so I'm guessing it would bounce back up a little bit. But uh, that's, that's the highest point you're at right now.
So this is, this is the five-year, the, the slant down is like over the next five years if we didn't borrow anymore.
Right.
In our, our capacity.
This is, this is a one-year look at your capital plan, and, and a lot of times when we're doing this for, for our clients, it's, it's kind of nice to have a five-year look. So I can put a graph in here that kind of, you know, maybe draws a line straight across. Because you're always doing projects and filling that. Um, but you know, that's something we can do if, if you guys, if you guys decide to do a five-year plan. Um, we're definitely willing to model it for you and, and we don't, you know, the only time we ever do anything. Uh, charging you a bill is when we're actually doing some kind of a contracted work for you. So um, I'd do that anytime during the year if you wanted it.
Or I think that would be an interesting um, thing to see, but I can talk to Drake, I have Drake talk to you about, you know, that or.
Absolutely. Always willing to help.
Does anyone have any other questions of Dave? Well, um. Yes, before we vote, thanks Dave for the presentation. It was very good, as usual. Uh. Drake said we could approve these as a block. Are we talking B through E or E and S included or F separately?
B through S can be approved uh, as a block, yes.
So it's up to the board if they want to approve them individually or.
That's correct.
B through F.
Yeah, if any of the village board members decide they want to take these individuals. Yeah, if any of the village board members decide they want to take these individually, then you, you need to do that. If there isn't a preference, then you can take them at all at once.
Uh, this, this is Chuck. I would move the approval of uh items B through F.
This is Henry, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. There any further discussion? Hearing uh, should we do a roll call on this?
Wouldn't hurt.
Uh, was not, yes, yeah.
Yeah, we need to do a roll call on this too, Kelsey, please.
Sure. Michael Bell. Henry Janisch.
Yeah.
Peggy Cruz. Tammy Newberry.
Yes.
Chuck Phillipsen.
Yes.
Roger Trutman.
Yes. The motion carries. Um, NMG consideration discussion contract with Ellers, a water impact fee study update. Drake?
Uh, the water facility needs assessment, uh, which is the engineering report being completed by town and country is nearly complete. Uh, the next step uh is to discuss their findings with the village's financial firm. And then they'll eventually proceed to present the needs assessment to the village board. Uh, administration uh contacted our financial advisor Ellers for a proposal and it is included in your packet. I did attempt to contact other firms, but I have not received any other proposals to date and it has been a few weeks. Ellers has provided numerous services to the village in the past and is, and is experienced in the design of impact fees. They're currently working on or recently completed study, studies for the cities of Waukesha, Cedarburg, Port Washington, as well as the village of Mount Pleasant within the last twelve months. Uh, total cost for this service is seventy-five hundred dollars uh following completion of the impact fee uh, design update. It would be presented to the village board for uh ultimate approval. Administration does recommend approval.
This is Chuck. Um, I'm gonna uh, I'm going to move the approval of the contract with Ellers for the water impact fee study update.
This is Peggy, I'll second.
Dave, we have a motion and a second. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we need a motion to go into closed session and thank you again, Dave.
Thank you.
Yes. You're welcome. Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.
Uh, we need a motion and a roll call to go into closed session.
This is Henry, I'm, make a motion, go on and close session.
Tammy, second.
Okay, Kelsey, please.
Yes. Michael Bell. Henry Janisch.
Yes.
Peggy Cruz. Tammy Newberry.
Yes.
Chuck Phillipsen.
Yes.
Roger Trutman.
Yes. We are in closed session, but we
Meeting is being recorded.
Okay, we are back in open session now. Okay, so we'll move on to item ten, President's Report. Consideration discussion returning to in-person village board meetings and village mask policy. This was brought up at the last meeting. Um, I guess all we're looking for is the board's opinion of whether they want to go back in the person, oh, excuse me, first-in-person meetings and moving forward.
So this is Chuck.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Uh, I, I'm just curious if Drake has any up-to-date information from uh Green County Public Health.
Unfortunately, I was not able to get ahold of them this week. Last week I was out on a uh family medical um, emergency. And so I was not able to do the amount of research I would have liked. Uh, so I do apologize for that.
No problem.
I do not have a, a current update from Green County Public Health.
Well, I, I think, I think at present, hello? Uh, I think at present their information's somewhat sketchy. Um, first I see that they're uh, designating us as low and then I hear we're high. Um, but um, I'm, well, just for the sake of discussion, I'm going to um I, I, I'm gonna state my feeling that uh if we return to to uh in-person, I would be very uncomfortable doing it in the boardroom. I realize the problems with the community room, the acoustics are so terrible. I think I would rather have to ask people to repeat themselves than to sit in the confinement of the boardroom. Um, just based on the fact that uh things coming up, there may be more than usual people in attendance. And if we could space out, I, I would be comfortable with in-person. Um, but we can't space out in the boardroom. You know, I, I, you know, if any more than ten or twelve people in there and we're in close confinement. So um, that's my feeling.
One, one potential solution, it's not, it's not perfect, is uh the chamber does have a sound system that I asked about using um to kind, to provide some amplification. Uh, the only drawback um is that their system only has, has, has two microphones. So it would require the, the passing uh of the microphone between members. Um, I can, I can certainly look into a, a, a sound system that would allow for every board member to have a microphone. Um, but I don't know how quickly I could find that or at what cost uh it might come with. Um, but it's certainly something that I can, I can try and, and find uh for the village board to, to utilize. Uh, that probably could be utilized in future years as well, even when the pandemic isn't a uh consideration, but when there's perhaps a large public hearing or, or gathering or, or, or something of that kind.
Oh, my feeling is that in future, um, based on what we know now about variants, subvariance and God knows, sub-subvariance, I don't know when this thing's gonna end. But uh, at some point, I think we need to have face-to-face meetings. Um, I'm, I'm, right now, my feeling would be, I, I would lean towards going through April with Zoom meetings and maybe at our next regular board meeting in April, um, make a decision on this. Have our next board meeting Zoom. And uh, hopefully the data will be a little clearer.
Well, I'll tell you Chuck, I Well, maybe on April nineteenth, you want to have another discussion on this? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
That's when we'll also have our, our newer board, you know, our new board.
Right.
Uh, I will comment that latter part of last week on one of the local television stations, I was totally shocked when it showed that about ninety percent of the state of Wisconsin was all in red again. So I agree with you, Chuck. I think we gotta at least maybe wait till the first meeting in May to, you know, discuss it on the nineteenth and see where it's at. And then maybe hopefully be able to be back in person in May. But like I agree, we just don't know from day to day what's gonna be coming at us. So I guess my, my thoughts are just, let's put it on a, the, another gen item for the nineteenth and see where the numbers and figures are at that time.
Well, having
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I, I would move that we uh, uh postpone whatever the Roberts rules term is. Uh, the discussion on this until the next regular board meeting, I believe is April nineteenth.
You made a motion, so now we need a second.
Yep.
Okay, Chuck made a motion, so we now need a second.
This is Tammy, I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Um, I see though that they said, but, but there's also in this same uh consideration and discussion of the village mask policy. Uh, is that, is that? Are we, are we
I just listed it on there in case the village board wanted to weigh in on it at all or wanted to set a policy for attendance at an in-person uh board meeting. Um, so that's why it's listed there. Um, no action is, is required i- if the board doesn't want to at this time. And I can list it the same way at the April nineteenth meeting.
I think though Drake has the powers to mask up the village hall, don't you? Didn't we give you that or did we rescind that?
It's active for a little bit longer. I, I can, I, I, I have authority over um facilities um through a resolution passed by the board. Right now, we, my, my philosophy has been to follow the Green County's lead on what they're doing with their facilities. Um, so if that were to change, then I would imagine we would follow suit if they were, were, went back to masks required.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Give that a read. Uh, Peggy, are you with us yet? I got a question for you.
Yes, I am.
Uh, are you gonna be available to be at the meeting on the nineteenth?
Uh, I will not be home, but I will, yeah, I will do it via Zoom.
Uh, because I've gotta be down the county board to be sworn in that night.
Oh, okay.
So if you could run the meeting, that would be great.
Okay, that should, that should be fine.
Okay. And I also want to say congratulations to Chuck and Tammy and Haley, thank you for election to the village board.
I am happy to serve with you guys another term.
Okay. Is there anything else from the board? Hearing none, we are adjourned.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.